Now, the Senate will come to order, and the senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators in all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Reverend Gene Pupke, First Unitarian Universalist Church of Richmond, Richmond, Virginia. After the prayer, everyone will remain standing and be led in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America by Senate Page Taylor Spruill.
We are blessed to come together in prayer and reflection. Spirit of life that binds us all into one people and one dear Commonwealth. Here are aspirations for this Senate body. As legislators and citizens, we pray that we may keep its waters, land and air well. May we guard its wildlife, its natural beauty. May we see that the poorest among us are given opportunity and relief with dignity. May the young grow in health and wisdom. And may we do so as we treasure our opportunities for freedom, wisdom, and community. May all that is done here by these senators build our unity, increase our peace and our prosperity, so that we might fulfill the promise of a strong democracy and the gifts which we have been given. O holy one, bless these deliberative senators, our Lieutenant Governor and all the elected officials, the pages, the legislative staff and security. May the sacrifice that they and their families make on our behalf result in a Commonwealth that honors the holy and cares for generations of Virginians. Amen, salam, amin, ashay. Blessed be.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll. All those in attendance will please record their vote. Aye. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. Senate Journal for Wednesday, January 29, 2020.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves, moves that the reading of the Journal be waived. All in favor of waiving the reading of the Journal will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-six, noes two.
Ayes, thirty-six, noes two. The reading of the Journal is waived. Clerk will report any communication from the House of Delegates. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of the communications from the House of Delegates.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-seven, noes three.
Ayes, thirty-seven, noes three. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. The clerk will report any communication from the governor.
We still do not have one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now comes the time in the morning hour where we have the honor and the privilege and the pleasure of recognizing our distinguished guests with us here in the Senate Gallery. I will give my usual daily reminder that the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand up and recognize an individual or group. I will then give the warm welcome of the Senate, and at the very end, we will all applaud together. Like that. I'd like to begin by not recognizing the senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley, and instead recognizing the junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Houshme.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Frank, Senator.
I rise for the purpose of introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
It's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce the Reverend Gene Pupke from the First Unitarian Universalist Church of Richmond. The Reverend hosts such a wonderful congregation and a church that is warm and welcoming to all who wish to participate and worship there. I've had the honor and privilege of worshiping at the church many times and have always enjoyed the hospitality I've received from the congregation and from the Reverend. And I thank her for her wonderful invocation this morning. And I hope, Mr. President, you'll offer the warmest welcome of the Senate to the Reverend.
I thank the senator. Reverend Gene Pupke, you are already standing, and we are so grateful for your presence here today and always when you come and visit us in the Senate and give us really powerful encouragement and beautiful prayer this morning. And we echo the eloquent and generous words of the junior senator from Chesterfield. Thank you for your leadership, your example. You always brighten up everyone's day when you're here in the halls. And your moral example is one that we should all follow. I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our dear friend, the Reverend Gene Pupke. The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Steph.
Mr. President, I rise for two quick introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Today in the gallery, we're joined by the guests supporting our seizure bill, Senate Bill 420. And they are Dennis Amici Terry, Kaylee and Braylee Boyce, Lowell Evans and Kathy, Christina Foster, Karen Foster, Doug Foster, Rowena Geswick and her husband, Bree Geswick, Kristy Van Cleve and her husband, Jamie Van Cleve, Fernando Carrato. Mr. President, let's give these guests our warmest welcome of the Senate and thank them again for being here on behalf of epilepsy and seizures.
All right, one freebie this morning. Next time, we're going to wait until the very end. But we would ask you all to rise if you are able. All of our distinguished guests who were just recognized, if you are able, please stand. Thank you all so much for being here today. We are wonderful seeing every single one of you. We're also very grateful for your advocacy and for your leadership in helping so many people around the Commonwealth of Virginia, so many families who deal with this very serious issue. So it is wonderful always to have our citizens who help us rise as a Commonwealth together. So I'd echo the eloquent and generous words of the senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Steph. And now, I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Steph.
Mr. President, I still stand for a second introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Today, we're joined by David Lillard and Kinsuchu Namine, business owner of Redline Performance Motorsports located in Yorktown. If it's broke, he can fix it. If it's an engine, he can tune it. And if you want to know the fastest thing on the road, he probably has it. Mr. President, I'd like to give the warmest welcome to David Lillard. Thank you.
I thank the senator. Would David Lillard please rise to the gallery? David, thank you so much for being with us here today. We're grateful for your presence. And of course, you're always welcome here in your Capitol. And we echo the generous and eloquent words of your state senator, Senator D. Steph. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friend, David Lillard. Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you. It's Student Day here. We've got, I've got two introductions. And the first is from our friends down in Newport News, Virginia, from Thomas W. Nelson, Thomas Nelson Community College. And, Mr. President, these are the pipeline to the future. Our community colleges have become so much more than they ever have before. And I would like to welcome our students and staff from Thomas Nelson Community College and wish that the Senate gives them the warm welcome.
Thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from Thomas Nelson Community College please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today and every year for coming to the Capitol and being such great advocates, and also for all you do in our communities to provide people with educational and economic opportunity. As Senator Marsden said, you really are the pipeline to the future, and you have a very bright future ahead of every single one of you. So I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from Thomas Nelson Community College. Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. And my second introduction this morning is the Malik School of Health Professions at Marymount University. They're going to be needed in this chamber probably a lot quicker than the community college students as we expand Medicaid, as we expand healthcare options for people throughout the Commonwealth. It's so critical that we have folks who are trained and enthusiastic about health professions career. So I'd like the Senate to give the warm welcome to the Marymount University Malik School of Health Professions staff and students.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from Marymount University Malik School of Health Professions please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Always grateful to have you here in the Capitol. Thank you for making the trip down from Arlington and really love all the work that you're doing. And it could not be a more important time to have well-trained health professionals as we, Senator Marsden said, expand Medicaid, but also make sure that everybody gets coverage and gets to live a happy, healthier life. So my brother-in-law went to Marymount. He's a huge fan. And I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from Marymount Malik School of Health Professions. Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, I hope all my colleagues have seen folks from Virginians for the Arts on the square today for Arts Advocacy Day. They are here to advocate for increases in funding, which we're seeing a bit of this year. And we're very appreciative of that. But, you know, Mr. President, there are thousands of arts-related business. We know our museums, our galleries, our theaters, and so many organizations. I had folks from the Symphony here today. So arts are such an important part of our community, such an important part of our culture. One of my favorite things is the educational. And in my art contest, it's gone from 25 participants to over 200. So, Mr. President, 120,000 Virginians are employed in the field of the arts, which is about $8 billion worth of economic impact. So it's an important economic development tool, but it's an incredible cultural foundation for our communities and our Commonwealth. So, Mr. President, I hope you and my colleagues will give the Virginians for the Arts a warm welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from Virginians for the Arts please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. And the Senate is wonderful to see you. I see our friends from Fairfax as well and appreciate all of your leadership all around the Commonwealth of Virginia. And Senator Mason, who is a champion himself of and for the arts, I know is particularly happy to see you here. So thanks for all you do to lift us up as a Commonwealth and help us dream a little bit bigger. And I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from Virginians for the Arts. Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason. Another, I don't know if you wanted to recognize Peninsula Agency on Aging at all.
Absolutely, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, my friends from the Peninsula Agency for Aging are here and brought an enormous group. Foster grandparents, I believe, is the focus, that they have grandparents that are volunteering in the schools, taking up to five-plus children to work with them throughout the day. You know, they make such an impact as we try to work to have our seniors age in place, stay in their home as long as they can. The Peninsula Agency for Aging and all of their many volunteers do a great job of making us aware of the issues, all the positive things that go with our seniors, as well as all the things that we need to focus on in our future to make sure that they live a long, as possible, and healthy lives. So, Mr. President, thank you for calling on me again. And please give our friends from the Peninsula Agency on Aging a warm welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from the Peninsula Agency on Aging please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. And thank you for the work you do every single day to take care of our seniors. They're really treasures in our community. And we are grateful for the care and for the love that you show to them every single day. I know the Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason, as long as some other senators represent the peninsula are deeply grateful for all of your work. And I met a wonderful member of your group a little bit earlier today, a grandmother, who so sweetly said that I don't have any grandkids. I'm going to take care of somebody else's. And I think that embodies the spirit of who you all represent. So Ivy Baptist Church is there. Dr. Swan, thank you all for your leadership. And I would ask everybody, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from the Peninsula Agency on Aging. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning.
Good morning, Senator.
I'd like to preface my remarks by reminding you that I'm seated next to the Chair of Rules. And she has admonished me that when we stand on the floor to make these introductions, that brevity is expected. And so with that, Mr.
Absolutely. We remind everybody of that. And we have some more rules we're going to go over today, too.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Senator.
Mr. President, we have with us today the Virginia Association of Personal Care Providers. And as you know, it's a statewide organization for companies that provide in-home personal care services to the elderly and disabled. These hard-working providers all across the Commonwealth have come to join us today and to see just what kind of work we're going to be doing here in the Commonwealth. And it's including for-profit and not-for-profit companies who share common challenges. So with that, Mr. President, I would wish that you would give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from the Virginia Association of Personal Care Providers please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your leadership in our communities and for taking care of the most vulnerable in our communities. We appreciate the heart and the diligence that you bring to your work, and we commend you. You're welcome back here anytime. And I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from the Virginia Association of Personal Care Providers. Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, recognizing the new suggested guidelines for brevity, I would like to welcome to the Senate and hope we can extend the warm welcome of the Senate to Bishop Sharma Lewis and the Virginia United Methodist delegation who are visiting with us in the gallery.
Thank the senator. Would Bishop Sharma Lewis and the Virginia United Methodist delegation please rise to the gallery if you are able? Bishop, Congress, please, rise. Thank you all so much for being here today. Thank you for your moral leadership in the Commonwealth of Virginia and for all you do to improve our communities and to help us rise to the better angels of our nature. We are grateful to you all. I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I rise for an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, the Virginia Retired Teachers Association is an organization of almost 6,000 retired teachers and non-professional school personnel who raise money for scholarships and volunteer in our communities and schools. In 1996, this General Assembly passed a resolution recognizing January 31st as Retired Teachers' Day in Virginia. There are a number of retired teachers here today visiting the Capitol as part of this recognition on Retired Teachers' Day Eve. I would ask you, Mr. President, to give them the warm greetings to the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from the Virginia Retired Teachers please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. And thank you for your tremendous contributions to the life of the Commonwealth of Virginia, to our young people who represent our future. You have poured into them. And we are so grateful to every single one of you, to your soon-to-be president, who I got to meet outside. Thank you for your tremendous leadership. And we are grateful to you. You're welcome back here anytime. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends and leaders from the Virginia Retired Teachers. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purposes of introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, in the gallery today, we have a stellar group. They're from Richmond County. And, Mr. President, just want to make sure the members heard, that's Richmond County, not Richmond City. Mr. President, Richmond County's on the northern neck. And the group is the 2019 School Board of the Year. They accomplished that achievement through the tremendous work that they do to educate students. And, Mr. Chairman, in the gallery, we have Chairman John Brown, Ken Blackney, the vice chairman, Kathleen Bean, Patricia Pugh, whose daughter is also here today, Vivian Wood, and Superintendent Greg Smith. Greg is a proud JMU Duke. And we're really thankful for the work that he and the entire school board have done to make Richmond County one of the best places to live, work, and raise a family.
Thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from the Richmond County School Board, 2019 School Board of the Year, please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. And just as importantly, thank you for your leadership every day in Richmond County. As the senator from Hanover so eloquently stated, you make it a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and give high-quality education to our young people, which really changes what's possible in their lives. So we are grateful to you for your work. We commend you today and every day. And I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from the Richmond County School Board. Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to request unanimous consent to introduce a bill.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, I've got a bill that's going to deal with immunity of legislators while they're in session. I'd like to present that to the desk and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate grant consent to introduce a bill referred to by Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the consent of the Senate is granted to introduce the bill. Is there any other business to come before the Senate in the morning hour? Do any other senators wish to be recognized? Seeing none, the clerk will call the calendar.
Senate Calendar for Thursday, January 30, 2020. Uncontested calendar, Senate Bills on Third Reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate Bills on Third Reading, on the uncontested calendar, pages one through eight, that's Senate Bill 96 through Senate Bill 1084, be placed on their final passage in a block. And any senator desiring to remove a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate Bills on the uncontested calendar, Third Reading, pages one through eight, Senate Bill 96 through Senate Bill 1084, be placed upon their final passage in the block? With the understanding that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block, will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The bills are before us in the block. Clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 96, Senate Bill 105, Senate Bill 244, Senate Bill 257, Senate Bill 281, Senate Bill 284, Senate Bill 428, Senate Bill 410, excuse me, 430, Senate Bill 434, Senate Bill 451, Senate Bill 454, Senate Bill 528, Senate Bill 580, Senate Bill 597, Senate Bill 690.
For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Oban Shane, rise.
Mr. President, would Senate Bill 528 come out of the block?
It's on page six.
Page six, and bye for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 528 will come out of the block and go bye for the day.
Senate Bill 690, Senate Bill 900, Senate Bill 1036, Senate Bill 1084.
Question is, shall the bills in the block pass? That is, all bills. For what purposes, the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise. I think your mic's not on, Senator. Did you see if your microphone's on?
I rise for a point of inquiry.
Senator has the floor.
I direct the body to pages four and five of the uncontested calendar. And I'm looking at Senate Bill 428, patron Surville, Senate Bill 430, patron Surville, Senate Bill 434, patron Surville, Senate Bill 451, patron Surville. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more practical, in addition to having an uncontested calendar and a regular calendar, just to have a Surville calendar?
That's not in the rules either. Thank the senator for the inquiry. The question is, shall the bills in the block pass? That is, all bills except for Senate Bill 528. All in favor of passage of the bills will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, no zero.
Ayes 39, no zero. The bills in the block pass.
Regular calendar, Senate Bills on Third Reading, Senate Bill 391, a bill relating to adult abuse, financial exploitation required report by financial institutions. Reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services, and we have a floor substitute.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the body reconsider the vote by which Senate Bill 391 was ordered and engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 391 was engrossed in advance be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, no zero.
Ayes 39, no zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the body adopt the floor substitute in speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. What this substitute does is it removes an individual staff member associated with a financial institution, has a mandatory reporter if there was a suspicion of financial abuse when it comes to an adult. So that is removed. And if you go to line 169 of your amendment, there's a paragraph that talks about financial institutions and the fact that their staff may execute a transaction, or may delay a transaction, may refuse to disperse funds, if the financial institution believes in good faith that there may be a cause of exploitation, financial exploitation. This language, 109 through 118, was actually adopted by this body just last year. What my amendment does, what this substitute does, is in addition, once a financial institution has made a determination using their own policies that exploitation could be at risk, that financial institution would be required to report that, to report their action within five business days to the local Department of Social Services or the Adult Protective Services hotline. I think this is a good amendment. I think it gets us to where we need to go. Social Services tells us that since 2017, there has been a 30% increase in financial abuse of our older adults, and they expect that this is being under-reported, because it's hard to keep track of financial abuse. It's not always reported. My point is, there really is a problem. We believe that this is the appropriate solution. Many stakeholders were at the table when we worked out this amendment, so I respectfully
Reported from the Committee on the Judiciary.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
ask that the body adopt the amendment. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator.
I move that the bill pass in speaking to the motion.
For what purpose, Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike rise. Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the motion.
What this bill does is it is a sentencing bill, so it says that if an individual is
Senator has the floor.
You know, this does extend the work of the Senator from Rockingham, worked on last year, provides, just simply, as the Senator from Arlington explained, the provision that
severely mentally ill at the time a crime is committed, then the jury should, and it
it, once they refuse a transaction, they become a mandated reporter.
can be demonstrated, again, defense counsel and prosecutors can call witnesses, et cetera,
And so it does help move the needle a little bit further, so I do support the amendment and ask the body to adopt it. Thank you, Mr. President.
et cetera, then the judge can direct the jury to remove the death penalty as an option.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the floor substitute? Seeing none, the question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted?
Person can still be found guilty, the person can be sentenced to life in prison.
All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
It removes the death penalty, again, for severe mental illness at the time the crime
The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
was committed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This body passed the bill last year with, it was actually a 36 to 4 vote, and the context
I move to engross in advance the bill to the third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
for this bill is many, many folks indicated to me that there's a need for another option.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senator from Prince William. Can you leave it there?
Right now, we have not guilty by reason of insanity, which is a very high bar, and I'm
Okay.
sure some of the lawyers in this body can speak to that. But there are situations where the death penalty should not be applied if, in fact, we're trying to follow guidance that had been issued by the Supreme Court in other cases, where they talk about culpability. For example, in 2002, the Supreme Court held in Atkins versus Virginia that it's unconstitutional to execute defendants with, quote, "mental retardation." And then in 2005, the Supreme Court in Roper versus Simmons held that youth shall not be executed, because in both of these cases, the standard used was, these individuals did not fully understand the impact, the consequences of their actions. And the court reasoned that it would be cruel and unusual punishment to apply the death penalty in situations such as I described. One would have to conclude that if an individual has a severe mental illness, that individual would not fully understand, be able to comprehend the impact of his or her actions. I think we are a compassionate society. I think we want to implement justice in as fair a way as possible. I think this bill is a tool that leads us to that higher ground, and I certainly hope it's within the body's pleasure to pass the bill. Thank you.
For what purpose does the junior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak in support of the--
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to point out to the body the following. This bill requires that there be empirical evidence that there's some type of active psychosis or psychotic symptoms that are going on, and after that has occurred, that has not prevented the defendant from being tried on the guilt and innocent stage. What this bill does is say that if it's a trial by jury in a capital case, or a trial by judge in a capital case, if that evidence of that substantial mental illness comes out, that the death penalty cannot be imposed. I hope it strikes others, or is as obvious to others in this body as it is to me, that the following occurs. To me, it is nothing short of indefensible that somebody can have his capacity to understand and appreciate the nature of the consequences, that he cannot exercise rational judgment, has still not prevented him from being tried on the guilt or innocent phase. And that's because, under the Virginia Code right now, we don't have any gradations. It's all or nothing. You plead innocent, or not guilty, or not guilty by reason of insanity. But this bill is so practical and makes such common sense, I ask the members on the other side that I think you can show strength, I think you can show fidelity to your pro-life concerns, I think you can show compassion by voting for this bill that says, if somebody has a severe mental illness, he can't be put to death. I'd ask that you support SB 116.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, the senior Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak against this bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, once again, we're talking about showing compassionate, compassion to folks and referencing our pro-life concerns towards those who exhibit some type of severe mental illness. Mr. President, I would argue that anyone that commits such a heinous crime is severely mentally ill, and there are concerns that were expressed today that the perpetrator did not fully understand the impact. Well, I would argue that a bill that I put forward today about, it's called the Pain Capable Bill, that would basically take an innocent life that can feel and sense pain at 20 weeks, was not heard today in Senate Health and Education. It wasn't even on the docket today, yet today, we are arguing in favor of compassion for those who are on death row and severely mentally ill, and the concern for not showing cruel and unusual punishment toward them, yet we are ignoring the unborn and won't even hear a bill in Senate Education regarding the unborn. Mr. President, I ask that we show compassion toward all people and that we vote against this bill today. Thank you.
For what purpose, Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking in support of the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, again, yesterday, we had a very emotional day, and it's because of my faith and what I believe in and how I was raised that I believe in life. And in this instance, what we're talking about is we're talking about those that are incapacitated by mental illness, and because of that incapacity, should they be put to death? I said yesterday, and I meant it, and I'll say it again, the criminal justice system is not perfect, never has been, will never be. There have been people who have lost their lives at the hands of government who did not commit a crime. Up in this gallery, I've introduced you to two gentlemen who were wrongly accused of crimes that they did not commit and served 25, 27, 30 years of their lives, lost their liberty, lost their freedom. If we were a perfect government system, then perhaps if we got it right every time in the criminal justice system, then the ultimate price might be paid. But on principle alone, principle alone, we do not have the power that our Creator has to take life. We do not have the authority to do it, moral, or legal, or otherwise. And for this, what we're talking about is someone, a human being, who is helpless, much like the unborn. So I stand here consistent to my beliefs and my faith and my logic. Those in my party, those that are conservatives, may take another view, and that's their right. But ladies and gentlemen, if we believe in life, then we should believe in life. And if we believe that the government cannot take life because someone is made and rendered helpless because of their mental incapacity, then how can we take life of those unborn babies? How can we take those life? Because they haven't even had the chance at it. They are as helpless as the person that you seek to assist and keep alive in this instance. It is ironic that we stand here today at the threshold of probably what we're going to have another argument on, which is the death penalty overall. And, Mr. President, I tell you now, I will support that bill. I will vote for that bill, just as I will vote for every bill that preserves life of the unborn. And if we're going to be consistent, if we're actually going to be human and consistent, then we all should take one position that is consistent. Don't vote for a life bill, and then vote against a death penalty bill. Make sure morally and legitimately that we have a policy here in Virginia that is consistent with life, because life matters. And for those that cannot help themselves, like the unborn, they deserve as much consideration as we are giving to Senate Bill 116 and the implications drawn from that measure. And I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunamit rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak to the bill.
Thank the Senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, I'd like to associate my comments with those of the Senator from Franklin, and simply say that I deeply believe that every human life is valuable and deserves to be treated with dignity. I will support this bill, as I will say I have in the past, because I do believe that all life should be protected by law, as is intended in the Constitution and the Fourteenth Amendment. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 116? For what purposes, the senior Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to complete my statements on Senate Bill 116, speaking against this bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I stand in support of protecting innocent life, but unfortunately, there are those who commit heinous crimes that are so heinous that they take the lives of many people, and I'm thinking of the Harvey murders right here in Richmond, in which an entire family was bludgeoned to death. Mr. President, I would argue an eye for an eye, a tooth for a tooth, and that those who are killed that day, the Harvey murders, justice needs to be provided in that situation. And while I agree on the protection of innocent life, I do feel like justice also needs to be served, and that those in this body are here to provide that justice. Thank you, Mr. President.
For what purpose, Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just speaking very briefly--
Senator has the floor.
The admonishment of an eye for an eye, or tooth for a tooth, was the preaching of limiting and restraint. When that was said and recorded, it was speaking against the vengeance of seven times justice, and it was of restraint. And so, a lot of folks have said a lot of things about this bill that were important to be said, but I just needed to say that at this time. Thank you.
Question is, shall Senate Bill 116 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 32, no 7.
Ayes 32, no 7. Senate Bill 116 passes.
Senate Bill 432, a bill relating to spousal support, reservation of right to seek material change of circumstances.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass in speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Folks, this is a pretty simple bill, but just to give you a quick understanding of it, when people get divorced, Virginia Code allows you to seek a reservation of your right to seek spousal support if you're not getting spousal support. That means you can come back at some future time to get it, and there's been some lack of clarity in the law as whether, when you come back in a year, or two, or three, or four, to ask for that spousal support, whether you have to show anything's changed between now and then. And this just makes clear that you have to show there's been a change. There's been circuit court judges around the state coming to different conclusions about this, and the bar wanted some clarity. The Family Law Coalition supports this, and would ask that we pass the bill.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 432? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 432 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 32, no 7.
Ayes 32, no 7. Senate Bill 116 passes.
Senate Bill 432, a bill relating to spousal support, reservation of right to seek material change of circumstances.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass in speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Folks, this is a pretty simple bill, but just to give you a quick understanding of it, when people get divorced, Virginia Code allows you to seek a reservation of your right to seek spousal support if you're not getting spousal support. That means you can come back at some future time to get it, and there's been some lack of clarity in the law as whether, when you come back in a year, or two, or three, or four, to ask for that spousal support, whether you have to show anything's changed between now and then. And this just makes clear that you have to show there's been a change. There's been circuit court judges around the state coming to different conclusions about this, and the bar wanted some clarity. The Family Law Coalition supports this, and would ask that we pass the bill.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 432? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 432 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 37, no 0.
Ayes 37, no 0. Senate Bill 432 passes.
Senate Bill 834, a bill relating to affordable housing dwelling unit ordinances.
Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 834 pass in speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill provides local governments with another tool to help incentivize affordable housing by creating a new affordable dwelling unit ordinance-enabling statute. We currently have one such statute that only applies to Alamo, Loudoun, Alexandria, and Fairfax, that grants local governments broad authority to craft their local ordinances. A separate section that applies to the rest of the state is extremely complex and burdensome, and both our local governments and our developers have found it too cumbersome to really do any good. We had a legislation a couple of years ago to try to fix this problem, wasn't quite there, and so, over the past two years, all of the stakeholders have worked together to create this third option. Does not remove or change 2304. For those other localities that wish to use 2305, that option remains to them, but this is a new option that'll be a little more flexible for the rest of our localities. A lot of stakeholders from local government, the developer community, the affordable housing advocates, worked a very, very long time to come to this consensus, and I ask that the bill pass.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 834? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 834 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 27, no 12.
Ayes 27, no 12. Senate Bill 834 passes.
Senate Bill 869, a bill relating to notice by localities.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Mr. President, I move the passage of Senate Bill 869, speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, what Senate Bill 869 does is provides that if a locality has submitted in a timely manner notice or requests related to a planning or zoning matter to a newspaper for general circulation of the newspaper, and it fails to be published at no fault of the locality, that it shall be deemed meeting the public notice if they've published it at least three weeks prior on their website. With that, I move the passage of Senate Bill 869.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis rise.
Would you, Gentlemen, yield for a question?
Will Senator yield?
Happy to do so.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Would the gentleman, is it true that during the testimony and presentation of this bill before the Local Government Committee, that there was a representation, there's an ongoing study with all the major stakeholders involved with this particular issue?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, Senator Lewis, absolutely, and that's why there's a reenactment clause on line 121, that this shall sunset in 2022.
Further question?
And also, would the gentleman, would the gentleman yield for another question?
Yield.
Absolutely, Mr. President.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
And also, would the gentleman acknowledge that there are several people still within this Commonwealth without access to the Internet, and therefore not access to any websites of any municipalities?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, Senator Lewis, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson rise.
Would you, Gentlemen, yield for a question?
Will Senator yield?
Mr. President, absolutely.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
I'd ask the gentleman, what is Planning District 23?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, Planning, Senator from Fairfax, Planning District 23 is the Hampton Roads Planning District area.
Further question?
Further question?
Senator Yields? Senator Yield?
Mr. President, happy to.
Yields, you have the floor.
I'd ask the gentleman, why are we doing a separate policy for Hampton Roads as opposed to doing one statewide policy? Isn't that confusing for our local governments and media?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, the gentleman from Fairfax would like to have that as a friendly amendment. I'm happy to receive that as a friendly amendment, but specifically, the problem in my district, in Planning District 23, in Virginia Beach in specific, or specifically, this has been an ongoing problem that, while I was there eight years ago, 10 years ago, it used to happen every once in a while, now it's happened-- But specifically, the problem in my district, in Planning District 23 and Virginia Beach in specific, or specifically, this has been an ongoing problem that while I was there eight years ago, 10 years ago, it used to happen every once in a while. Now it's happening extremely frequently and costing a lot of time and effort, both on the part of the developers, Planning District, I'm sorry, Planning Commission, and the city council who has to re-advertise and re-advertise and re-advertise, push meetings back, which as we know, time is money, Mr. President. And when you're developing a piece of project, if because it's not advertised in a timely manner, then that becomes the issue. So with this, and again, what happens generally in my district, they don't just put it in the newspaper once four weeks out, they put it three weeks out, two weeks out, and then the week of. So specifically in Planning District 23 with my newspaper, this would actually get in there at least two or three more times after the first time that it was missed.
Further question?
No further questions.
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. For what purposes Senator from King George? Senator Stewart, rise.
Speak to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the body, this is a bad policy in Hampton Roads, it's a bad policy across the state. I don't know any other way to say it, and I hate to speak against my friend from Virginia Beach, but the whole idea here of putting this in the newspaper is so that the neighbors and those affected by it have notice and they can talk about it and talk to their local government officials and be aware. It impacts them. It has an effect on their lives, and they should get the opportunity to tell that to their local government officials. It's almost like with this bill, we would punish the citizens who would be affected by the project because, and frankly, the responsible thing to do is if you're putting this advertisement in the paper, call the newspaper and say, "I sent you this ad to run on such and such a date. Can you verify that you have placed it to be run?" That's a way to cure this whole problem. We don't have to punish the citizens. I hope you vote no.
Mr. President, if I may, address the gentleman from King George's.
Senator, Senator has the floor.
Debate on this. What happens, and I've been there when this has happened, is it's put in the newspaper, they go three to four days out where they'll put the request in. If it doesn't go exactly at 30 days or the four weeks before, then the next day, actually that evening, the clerk is calling the editor and calling the board on that saying, "Hey, we asked for this to be put in, we paid for this to be put in, it didn't get put in." So what they normally do, they'll put it in the next day for the newspaper. So for those who read the newspapers, it's not that it's not going in, it is going in. It's just not going in within the 30 days which is required under FOIA. And it's, again, at no fault to the locality. So, Mr. President, I don't believe that we should be penalizing the locality, penalizing the developer, penalizing anybody if it goes in a day late, again, at no fault to the locality. And with that, Mr. President, if there's no more questions, I'll move the passage of this fine Senate bill, Senate Bill 869.
Okay, I think we got a couple more. For what purposes is Senator from Lynchburg? Senator Peake, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to ask the patron if this bill could go by temporarily.
Mr. President, if the gentleman would ensure that I have 30 days' notice, he's paid for it for the advertising before him, no, I'm happy to let it go by temporarily.
Without objection, Senate Bill 869 will go by temporarily.
Senate Bill 955, a bill relating to celebration of marriage fee.
Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill.
Thank you, Mr. President, speaking to the bill.
Thank the Senator. You have the floor.
This bill, SP 955, asks to be approved. This bill would allow marriage commissioners to charge up to $75 per ceremony. This is an increase of $50. It's due because it's been almost 20 years since the marriage commissioners, those who merge outside the church, have gotten a raise. Nowadays, is that folks don't get married to church like they used to. So this commission is saying that because, let me use Hampton Roads for an example, because of all the tolls, because of all the tunneling and the traffic that they have to go through, that they ask for an increase. In the old days, when 90% of people used to get married in churches and what have you, and I guess they gave a stipend to the pastor. But now they don't. They use a marriage commission to travel all over Hampton Roads and all over the state. So because it has not been done in almost 20 years, they're asking for up to $75 increase. I ask that the bill pass.
Thank the Senator. Any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 955? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 955 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, twenty-one, noes, eighteen.
Ayes, twenty-one, noes, eighteen. Senate Bill 955 passes.
Uncontested calendar Senate bills on second reading.
Mr. President.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
That passed, having voted on the prevailing side of 955. May we ask for reconsideration? A member would like to correct his vote.
Okay. Question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 955 passed be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-nine, noes, zero.
Ayes, thirty-nine, noes, zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I move this bill be passed. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall Senate Bill 955 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, twenty-three, noes, sixteen.
Ayes, twenty-three, noes, sixteen. Senate Bill 955 passes.
Uncontested calendar Senate bills on second reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar pages 10 through 16, that's Senate Bills 40 through Senate Bill 1039, be advanced to the engrossment in third reading in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto. Any Senators desire to remove a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar on pages 10 through 16, Senate Bill 40 through Senate Bill 1039, be engrossed in advance to the third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and that any Senator designing a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 40, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 54, reported for the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendments.
Senior Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have moved that we accept the amendments, which is just basically the clause.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 362, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 423, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendment and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 569, reported from the Committee on Education and Health with amendment and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunamit.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the substitute, excuse me, the committee amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is.
We need to reject it to get to the substitute.
Does the Senator want, with the recommendation to be rejected on the amendment to get to the sub?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. That's exactly what I meant to move, that we reject the amendment so that we can get to the substitute.
Thank the Senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it, the committee amendment is rejected. Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunamit.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I now request that we move the finance substitute.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 605, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Mr. President, I also move that the committee amendment from the Committee on Finance be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill 651, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 652, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations, and there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator BoySCO.
Mr. President, I move that the reading of the amendment be waived.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator BoySCO.
Mr. President, I move that the amendment be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, do you want to speak to it, Senator?
It's simply a clarifying amendment. The bill is to allow county employees who have retired from their retirement pension system to enter into the same county's police pension system. If so, moved. And it just clarifies that they've got to already be in the same county, that they can't come from outside of the county.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the floor amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill 671, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendments.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we agree to the committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 828, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendment.
Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I move we accept the amendment from the Commerce and Labor Committee.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 1019, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley. Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1039, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Question is.
Returning to page nine, Senate Bill 869.
That's not in this section. That's in a different section.
Oh, sorry about that.
Mr. President.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
If we can take that by for the day, I'd like to prepare an amendment on it.
Well, let's do this vote first. But hold, hang right there. Question is, shall the Senate bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
Mr. President, just parliamentary inquiry?
Yes.
If the gentleman wants to amend the bill and we take it to third reading, then we're going to have to.
It's in a different section. It's in a different section.
Never mind.
It's my mistake. I'm sorry to confuse Senator Distef.
I'm easily confused.
Mr. President, parliamentary inquiry?
Yes.
Did I just hear the clerk say she made a mistake?
No one is perfect.
As you were, Mr. President.
It was nice knowing you, Senator. The question is, shall the Senate bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bills are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Now, as I move your desk to Broad Street, Senate Bill 869.
Mr. President, speaking to you live from Broad Street.
Senior Senator has the floor.
I'd like to take Senate Bill 869 by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 869 will go by for the day.
Regular calendar Senate bills on second reading. Senate Bill 95, a bill relating to health insurance, essential health benefits, preventative services, reported for the Committee on Commerce and Labor with an amendment.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the amendment be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is agreed to. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 246, a bill relating to Department of Motor Vehicles sex designation, reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Do you want to move the committee substitute first?
Oh, I don't see it up there. Yeah, I moved the committee substitute. Oh, there it is.
It's at the top. Question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? I'm having a lot of fun today. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. It's close. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be advanced and engrossed to its third reading, engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 251, a bill relating to pharmacy benefits managers licensure and regulation, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute, and there are two floor amendments.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hager.
Mr. President, I would ask that that bill go by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 251 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 345, a bill relating to workers' compensation presumption of compensability for certain diseases, reported for the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading, and speaking to the motion.
You don't need to speak to it. Yep, you're all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, thank you. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 404, a bill relating to health insurance, short-term, limited-duration medical plans, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendments.
Mr. President.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
I move that that bill be passed by for the day.
Without objection. Senate Bill 404 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 480, a bill relating to covenant-not-complete low-wage employees civil penalty, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Mr. President, I move we engross and advance this to the third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 578, a bill relating to a system for early childhood care and education establishment licensure, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 662, a bill relating to prohibiting employers from retaliating against employees for reporting employee misclassification civil penalty, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boisko.
Thank you. I move that it be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on first reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on first reading, on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 20 through 30, that's SB 168 through Senate Bill 101090, that the rules be suspended and the first constitutional reading be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended in the first reading of the titles of Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 20 through 30, Senate Bill 1068 through Senate Bill 1090 be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes 37, no, zero.
Ayes 37, no, zero. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move the memorial resolution on page 31.
Senator, sorry, before we get there, can we go to bottom of page 30? When have those go by for the day, the ones that we just...
I thought I said, okay.
I'm talking memorial resolution.
Excuse me, yeah.
That's okay.
I would now move that all said bills on the first constitutional reading go by for the day.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bills will go by for the day.
Memorial resolutions.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Now, Mr. President, I move the memorial resolution on page 31, HJR 149, 158, and 83, and SR 15, be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof, with the understanding that any senator desiring to move from the resolution from the block do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution.
I thank the senator. And as I posed the question, would ask everyone to please take their seats as we do the memorial resolutions. The question is, shall the memorial resolutions on page 31, HJR 149 through SR 15, be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block, will do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the titles of the memorial resolutions.
House Joint Resolution 149, celebrating the life of Maya Lefon Smith. House Joint Resolution 158, celebrating the life of the Reverend Sidney Strather Smith III. Senate Joint Resolution 83, celebrating the life of the Honorable Mary T. Christian.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Mr. President, could Senate Joint Resolution 83 come out of the block?
Without objection. Senate Joint Resolution 83 will be removed from the block.
Senate Resolution 15, celebrating the life of Esmond B. Lambert.
The resolutions will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the memorial resolutions will please rise. Resolutions are agreed to. Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that Senate Joint Resolution 83 be agreed to, and speaking to the resolution.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I knew Mary Christian prior to her becoming a member of the House of Delegates. She was my colleague at Hampton University. And I came to Hampton University as a young and dumb faculty member, straight from graduate school. And so, and at that time, she was the dean of the School of Education. And so, and I was an instructor. So, generally called by a lot of people as one of those young teachers. So, could learn a lot from someone who had been at Hampton for a long time. She was a graduate of Hampton Institute and had worked her way up from being in the laundry room and being a secretary at Hampton, to going away to college, going away to graduate school, and coming back to Hampton, and working her way up to becoming the dean of the School of Education. So, I was able to learn a lot from her as one of those young people who came there as an instructor, and one of those young people, and one of those fiery young people who kind of had to pull on cocktail as a political scientist who knew everything. So, learned a lot from her. So, when she first ran for the House of Delegates, she ran as an independent, because she certainly couldn't get the nomination of the party as one of those fiery independents. But Dr. C, as we all knew her in the area, was the first African-American to serve on the Hampton School Board. She had made her way into the political arena in the city of Hampton. Everybody knew who Dr. C was. And once she got here, she served on the Appropriations Committee, she served on joint rules. And we all knew Dr. C in Hampton, not necessarily so much for what she was doing up here, but she was a thespian, and I don't know that very many people knew that about her. And wherever she would go, she would always bring this flair for drama into the room, reciting poetry, reciting Langston Hughes and others into anything that she would say or do. And so, as, when she retired, she didn't necessarily retire. She would hold fort at her house for everyone in the community. So, anyone who wanted to engage in the political arena, you knew that you had to go by Dr. C's house in order for her to give you her blessing. And for the longest time, Dr. C never ever called me by my name. She always called me Sojourner. So, finally, I said, "Dr. C, why are you calling me Sojourner?" And she said that she'd had a conversation with this man who said, "Oh, that, that..." I was on the city council in Hampton, and I was a mayor, and he had said, "Oh, that Mayor Locke, she ain't nothing but the truth." And so, she said, from that point on, she started calling me Sojourner for Sojourner Truth. And from that point on, she just, whenever she saw me, it was always, "Hey, Sojourner, how are you doing?" And I don't think she ever called me by my name from that point on. It was always, "Hey, Sojourner." And so, I think that in the city of Hampton, she was a giant of a person. Everybody knew Dr. C, everybody respected Dr. C, and we learned, we earned our political wings from Dr. C. And I saw her at least three or four days before she passed, because she was at the NAACP banquet. And so, I think that if there was anyone who was a political giant, it was Dr. Mary T. Christian. And so, I think that when we adjourn today, that we would do so in her memory.
Resolution will be, for what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
Mr. President, I rise briefly to speak to the resolution.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, when I was a young pup in the House of Delegates, I think there's a couple of us that were here, Mary Christian was our colleague, and I cannot think of a kinder, more gentler person to serve with. She never had a harsh word for anybody. She was very kind enough to introduce me to the Hampton NAACP when I was making a very futile stab for statewide office in 2004, and was just the nicest lady. She also invited me to be part of the Sunrise Caucus, which was a Bible study that she and Vic Thomas, of all people, held on Tuesday mornings, talk about representing different ends of the Democratic Party and different ends of the state. But they were wonderful people, and I treasured her greatly as a friend, and I second the motion of the gentle lady from Hampton.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the resolution? Seeing none, the resolution will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the memorial resolution will please rise. The resolution is agreed to.
Commending resolutions.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move the commending resolutions on pages 31 through 33. That's HJR 135 through SJR 84 be considered in a block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions, with the understanding that any senator desiring to remove a resolution from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the commending resolutions on pages 31 through 33, HJR 135 through SJR 84, be considered in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block, will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the numbers of the resolutions.
House Joint Resolutions 135, 139, 141, 146, 150, 151, 152, 153, 154, 155, 156, 157, 159, 160, 163, 164, Senate Joint Resolution 84.
Question is, shall the resolutions be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolutions are agreed to. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I inquire of the clerk, does this complete the calendar?
Yes, sir.
Can't believe it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane, rise.
Mr. President, I rise for a motion for unanimous consent. I have a bill that I wish to submit after the deadline, and speaking to this motion...
Senator has the floor.
This bill deals with the initiation of a process to reseed previously ceded and reseeded territory of the United States, reannexation of the state of government of the United States. Got that? Actually, that's exactly what this bill does. In case you didn't get that, I, like many of you, took note earlier this week with dismay at the press conference held in our neighboring state of West Virginia. It was a press conference held by Governor Jim Justice and our own Jerry Falwell Jr., in which they suggested to Virginia that we should solve our political differences by leaving the Commonwealth of Virginia and joining West Virginia. And I, for one, do not believe that that is a viable solution to our problems. I really believe that we here in Virginia should find a way, and it may be a painful way, to try and work out our differences. And, you know, I value each and every single one of my colleagues here in the State Senate. And I don't want this motion or this bill I'm proposing to reflect on my affection for any of my colleagues, because I do hold you in high esteem, but this, this bill deals with the illegal and unconstitutional session by the federal government of 10 square miles in 1847 to Virginia. I don't know whether my friends in here who are students of American history remember this from their civics class or their history classes, but when the nation was formed, you know, we had, there was a debate over where the seat of government was going to lie. And there was a compromise made in 1790 pursuant to which Maryland and Virginia ceded a total of 100 square miles for the creation of the federal district. And the federal district lay on the north and south side of the Potomac River, and everything was proceeding swimmingly until about the 1840s, when the debate over slavery really started to raise its ugly head. And in Virginia, in my part of the state, and in South Side, Southwest Virginia in particular, there was a strong abolitionist movement that was gaining steam in Virginia. And there was concern amongst those in the federal government who wanted to maintain the balance of power between the North and the South, and there was concern among some in Virginia that we needed to reinforce the pro-slavery portions of the General Assembly. And to do that, I mean, amazingly, you would not believe it, but the county of Arlington was a strong pro-slavery portion of Virginia. Indeed, it was. And the solution to firm up the pro-slavery forces in Virginia was to cede Arlington County back to Virginia, to give the Virginia legislature two more pro-slavery legislators to counteract the people in Senator Stanley's part of the state, my part of the state, and Senator Hanger's part of the state, who wished to be more progressive. And in 1846, there was actually a referendum held in Arlington County, and that referendum actually failed there on a vote of 106 to 29. They wanted to stay in the federal district. Yet, the federal government ignored that, and they moved forward with the retrocession of that 10 square miles to the Commonwealth of Virginia. However, there were serious constitutional questions about the constitutionality of that move. Congress, you see, and the federal government has the power in the Constitution to accept property. Our founding fathers, who drafted the Constitution, recognized that they needed a seat for the federal government, and they built that power into the Constitution expressly to accept territory. But there's no constitutional power for the federal government to give that territory back. And, you know, rather than having my part of the state, or South Side Virginia, or some other portions of the state, Fairfax County maybe even, might be tempted to join Governor Justice and West Virginia, and I don't want that. I don't want that. So, I believe that we need to seriously debate this alternative that would allow 95%, 98% of the landmass of the Commonwealth of Virginia to remain Virginians, because I believe in Virginia. I believe in the integrity of our Commonwealth, the cohesion that binds us together. I think that this is a solution that, as painful as it may be, we need to explore further. So, Mr. President, I would ask for unanimous consent to offer this fine bill.
That's what we heard on the motion. For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
I rise to object to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
With apologies to my good friend from Harrisonburg, let me just make some points about Arlington County, which is part of Virginia and a proud part of Virginia. First of all, it's the home of one of our favorite senators, all right? Secondly, half my employees live there. If you own a business in Northern Virginia, all the young people live in Arlington now, which means if Arlington left, they'd have to be paying DC taxes, okay? So, I'd probably lose them. Number three, it's the home to some of the finest bars in Northern Virginia. Restaurants. Number four, number four, it has the highest...
Number four, number four, it has the highest Starbucks per capita of any community, probably in the world. Number five, if Arlington County is no longer part of the Commonwealth of Virginia, some of the statues in this building, you may have to relocate because that person would no longer be a Virginian. And you might want to think about what I'm saying to you, because if I mention that name, I'll probably cause this whole building to melt down, okay? So, the bottom line is Arlington has been a part of Virginia's history, from the time of the Civil War up until today. I may not always agree with the folks in Arlington, sometimes I do, but the bottom line is they've been great people, great Virginians, I might add. And so, I will object to your motion. I'm going to keep them here, and let's work harder to make them feel part, make them feel part of this great Commonwealth. Thank you.
For what purpose, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, rise.
Mr. President, I appreciate the remarks by the senator from West Virginia, but I was wondering, since he's in the mood for changing things, whether he would be willing to support a constitutional amendment or bill to allow the Eighth Planning District to become its own state, leaving Virginia with, looking not much like, much different than the state he was talking about.
Mr. President, I do yield, and I would not object to a request for unanimous consent from the senator from Fairfax, senior senator from Fairfax, if he wished to put that in so that we could have a robust discussion about the merits of such issue.
For what purpose, Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to object to considering the bill at this point.
Senator has the floor.
I represent South Side of, a part of the South Side of Arlington, what is today Arlington County, and at the time the senator refers to was called Alexandria County. Why he wants to allow our arugula-loving, Prius-driving, latte-drinking, Birkenstock-wearing, important economic drivers of the state economy to go away is beyond me. And I would point out that at the start of the Civil War, West Virginia left us, and I would instead invite West Virginia to join us, to come home, to do what they broke away from. And they too would benefit from being Virginians, as were so many other states. So, we've, we've solved the Civil War, have them come home, and if you send us off to the District of Columbia, we're going to have a lot of people smoking marijuana legally. Let's start with DeCrim.
For what purpose, the senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the gentleman from Rockingham yield for a question?
Will the senator yield?
You're not going to object, I yield.
No.
You have the floor.
What do you think we can get for it? What do you think we can get for it?
What purpose does the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise?
Mr. President, point of parliamentary inquiry. It's already been objected to.
It's dead.
We haven't had a formal vote or motion, though, so I don't like the way it's looking, though. For what purposes, the senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill, rise.
Next, Mr. President, I rise to support. For years, I've been calling Northern Virginia the other state, and I'm trying to determine whether it's Shalitfield included or not. So, if that would legally put that part of the state alarm with Northern Virginia and the other state, I would sign what people want. I love them, though. I love them, but I want them to have their own state.
For what purpose, the senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, rise.
Well, I am the senator from Arlington, and I want you to know that we feel, we did feel welcome until this motion was made and this resolution. Arlingtonians are full of, you know, love and sharing and all kinds of things. We have the most number of lawyers per capita of any jurisdiction in the entire country. So, if you move forward with this motion, we will tie you up in court from now till kingdom come. You probably won't get any dollars at all. And, and by the way, we also have the Pentagon within our jurisdiction, so, just saying, just saying. I, I think I object to this motion, but we're willing to talk about it. There could be a pro and a con. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the motion? And not to change the history lesson of the senator, and I appreciate your remarks, but before we take this vote, I will say that things were not going swimmingly for a lot of people before 1848, so I want to note that. The question is, shall the Senate grant consent to introduce the bill referred to by the senator? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The consent of the Senate is not granted to introduce the bill. For what purpose, Senator from Bassett, or Deeds, rise.
For an announcement.
Senator has the floor.
The Criminal Law Subcommittee will meet right after the session. We have 19 bills, and I'd like to get rid of them before the Finance Committee begins at 4:30.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard? Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Seeing none, the clerk will report any announcements on the desk.
Today, Thursday, January 30th, the Judiciary Subcommittee on Criminal Law will meet immediately upon adjournment, Senate Subcommittee Room 3, Fifth Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Deeds, Sasslaw, McDougal, Stewart, Stanley, Servell, and Morrissey. This is a scheduled change. Judiciary Subcommittee on Criminal Law immediately upon adjournment. The Committee on Transportation will meet 15 minutes after adjournment, Senate Room 3, Capitol. The Education and Health Subcommittee on Public Education will meet one half hour after adjournment in Senate Subcommittee Room 2, Fifth Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Hashmi, Howell, Locke, Donovan, and Peake. The Finance and Appropriations Subcommittee on K-12 Education will meet at 3:00 PM, Senate Subcommittee Room 1, Fifth Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Sasslaw, Howell, Norman, Lucas, Newman, and McClellan. The Committee on Finance and Appropriations will meet at 4:30 PM in Committee Room B, Pocahontas. The Rural Caucus will meet at 5:00 PM, House Subcommittee Room 300B, Third Floor, Pocahontas, tomorrow, Friday, January 31st. The Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services will meet at 8:00 AM, Senate Room A, Pocahontas. This is also a scheduled change. Rehabilitation and Social Service, 8:00 AM, Senate Room A, Pocahontas. The Education and Health Subcommittee on Health Professions will meet at 8:00 AM, Senate Subcommittee Room 2, Fifth Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Barker, Sasslaw, Newman, Edwards, Donovan, Lewis, and Suterlin. The Finance and Appropriations Subcommittee on Capitol Outlay will meet at 8:00 AM, Senate Subcommittee Room 1, Fifth Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Deeds, Norman, Howell, Sasslaw, Hanger, and Locke. The Committee on Rules will meet at 10:00 AM, Senate Room 3 in the Capitol. Rules, 10:00 AM, Senate Room 3 in the Capitol. The Democratic Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 1, Capitol. The Republican Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 2 in the Capitol.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do any other senators wish to be recognized? Seeing none, clerk calls on the senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate do now adjourn until 12 noon tomorrow, and in so doing, we do so in memory of the Honorable Mary T. Christian.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate stand adjourned until 12 noon tomorrow, and that when we do adjourn, we do so in the honor and memory of Dr. Mary T. Christian? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the Senate stands adjourned until 12 noon tomorrow in the honor and memory of Dr. Mary T. Christian.